Someone. Someone. Last Thursday, the board met for one final session with our 4A B on the Lakeview Eden Street property, which had gone on for approximately one year. The decision was made at that meeting, however, it needed to be reviewed by the town council one last time, which we allowed to occur, and we extended the actual signing and the stamping of the documents for this evening. Rather than hold that off, I'm going to take care of that first. We are short one member of the board this evening. If that one member does not show up, I will tell, I assume that we have the three candidates for the hearings tonight, that you have an option, I'm telling you right up front, with four members, this is a five-member board. If there were a variance, it would be four out of the five. That means all five would have to vote in the affirmative. If there's special permits, three of the five, I'm sorry, four of the five will also need to...
Strike that out.
So the first order of business this evening, I'm going to have you wait a few seconds, we will stamp the decision in, we'll actually sign it this evening, give it to the planning member, which will, one decision will be kept for the community in the clerk's office, and the other will be given to the petitioner. So we have two sets of plans before us. One is a control document. Now with all that said, what was the original, what was the original case number?
Eighteen dash zero one.
And we also have the architectural drawings. Leave that to...
Thank you.
I think I signed that one. Did I sign your architectural one?
You did not.
You did not, yeah. Okay. Now the actual decision. I don't think we need that stamped, because this is stamped.
Yep.
We just each need to sign the back.
Yep.
Put the date on the front.
Mm-hmm.
Sorry.
Awesome. Thank you guys very much.
We are now completed a very long...
How do you spell that?
...set of hearings.
Arabic.
So moving into tonight's hearings. First of which is case number nineteen dash oh-three, thirty-five Schutze Street. The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing in the selectmen's meeting room at Town Hall, sixteen Lowell Street, Reading, Mass. on Wednesday, March the sixth, two thousand nineteen, seven p.m. on the application of Laura Dougherty and Paul Reynolds pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter forty-eight, Section nine, for special permit under the Reading Zoning Bylaw, Section seven point oh, seven point three, and seven point three two, to construct a second-story addition to an existing non-conforming dwelling on the property located at thirty-five Schutze Street in Reading, Mass. Unless there's an objection, I will dispense with the reading of the abatis list, except to say that the abatis were notified, as were the Board of Selectmen, Police Department, Building Department, Health Department, Engineering Division, Town Clerk, Fire Department, Conservation Commission, Assessor's Office, CPDC, and members and associated members of the Board of Appeals, as well as the planning boards of Wakefield, North Reading, Lee Field, Stone and Woburn. The applicant is here this evening. This is for, everybody's going to have, hear this read three times. I, the testimony given before the board, this board is taken under oath, so if you think you may wish to speak this evening, it does not hurt, please stand and raise your right hand. I swear that the testimony given before me, before this board, will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, and the answer is I do.
I do.
You have the floor.
Thank you. I am Nancy Toomey. I am the architect helping Laura and Paul with their addition. I have put together just a quick narrative I wanted to give you that outlines a little bit more detail what it is that we're doing for you guys, and then also I have some pictures. The goal is to, the house was built in eighteen sixty-one, according to the assessor's card, and it looks big from the front, but it's actually just four rooms and one and a half bathrooms, which I think is quite interesting. The goal is to add a kitchen and mudroom entry at the first floor at the back, and then a third bedroom with a bathroom on the second floor. The house is currently non-conforming on both side yard setbacks. It's currently ten and a half feet from the south side and thirteen and a half from the north. So as we add the addition, it, in the property line angles, the addition gets, we've set it back from the south side, but as it goes back, it gets as close as eleven point three. And then on the north side, we start out at fourteen point one, but then it becomes conforming as it gets towards the back. The little proposed deck is sixteen feet from the side. So our hope tonight is that you will, we're asking for a special permit based on seven point three point two. We don't think that this addition is any way more detrimental to the neighborhood than the house is currently. As I mentioned, it looks a lot larger from the front, so as we go back in the back, it isn't going to change that view or that look to the neighborhood. The one advantage too is that we're removing the small side porch, which right now is their back door. By removing that porch and door, it actually affords the south side neighbor more privacy with this addition. I have pictures if you would like to see this as, these are photos taken from the south side neighbor's house, just so you can see it, I don't have a chance to drive by it. These pictures, the next set is from the side where the side porch is that we're removing, and then the final picture is just the back of the existing house, just to show where the addition is off the back. Any questions?
Having had a chance to review the documents and the new information this evening, I'll ask the board if they have questions or concerns. First, I want to start off with...
Yeah, sure. Could you tell me more about the topography of the lot? I see there's a retaining wall.
Yeah, the retaining wall on the north side, you're saying. Yeah, that house sits up fairly high compared to their property, so it's a pretty level lot overall, and the neighbor to the south is also pretty level to this lot, but on the north side, there's an existing stone retaining wall that, I guess, holds back the land for the house above them on the left. Schutze Street kind of angles down, it's an interesting old, very old street with some very beautiful homes on it, but that house happens to sit up, it's also a very old house. Pretty big, yeah.
I don't have any more questions.
Nancy, a quick question. Now you say the side entryway is coming, is being demolished or coming off?
Yeah, there's a side porch, you'll see it on the south side.
Right.
That's being removed. That door will come out and that porch will come down entirely.
Down.
So the ten point five, though, is from the, we didn't use that in the calculations, but that is probably about five feet off of the...
Right.
Yeah, even a little bit less than that, yeah.
Took at the ten, ten point five being to the corner.
To the corner of the main building.
Main building, yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
And I took a ride by, but it stopped and looked a bit, but difficult to see. Now the existing garage in back is current and that's being used?
Uh, yeah, it's, for now. For now. It's very old. I, you know, it's interesting trying to come back and figure out how these houses work. This was built in eighteen...
Yeah, I saw that.
Sixty-one. I was very surprised, yeah. But it's post and beam, it's quite old, it's very interesting, and they have that existing access easement that's shared between the two lots.
Okay.
And the door to that existing garage actually faces the south.
Oh, boy.
So my thought was that that access way was probably an old driveway that went up to that building.
Sure.
And I don't know, the house on the right that actually faces Woburn, that's probably newer than this.
No, they're in the same house.
Same house.
Until nineteen, nineteen forty, they moved it out.
Oh, interesting. So there you go. So it's an interesting neighborhood.
Okay. And since it's that old, did you have to do anything with the historical...
We're not demolishing anything, we're adding to it.
Right.
So I don't believe that, and I don't know that it's on the historic register in Reading, yeah, it's not.
It's not on the register.
No, we're making it.
It's not in a historic district or anything.
No, it is not. Yeah.
Okay. Looking at it, appears to me to be legal non-conforming lot, and also the structure, if it was built in eighteen sixty, I would say is legal non-conforming, it has any setbacks, certainly. Proposed development, or the proposed addition, they're not encroaching in the side setbacks any more than what's already exists, so there's no further non-compliance. It's at the rear, as you said, of the existing dwelling, so you're not going to see too much change from the street or from the front of the dwelling. Lot coverage stays less than twenty-five percent.
Correct.
On there. And certainly, I didn't see that this new addition would be substantially, any more substantially detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing dwelling that's there now. So I don't have any further questions. Right now, I'm about hearing any other comments, I would support it.
Sorry. I think it's a very straightforward addition to an existing non-conformity. I don't hear any negative comments or derogatory comments whatsoever. It's, you're not creating a new non-conformity anyway, you're making best use of what space you have.
That's right.
And doing it in compliance with the ground rules of the bylaws of the town of Reading. I have no problem with it, what's more, I...
Right, thank you.
I have no questions and I have no comments. No problems.
All good.
I'm going to ask Nancy. The bulkhead, are you talking about just a...
A metal bulkhead.
Metal bulkhead on the side.
Yeah, that's correct.
Which is not subject to setback controls.
That's correct.
You are at the closest point, fourteen point seven feet, which is actually in the front.
Correct.
The five feet in the back does not, I, I'm sorry, the ten, ten point five feet is the closest point.
That's correct.
Because the stoop is not calculated again also, so ten point five feet is what we're looking at, you're coming back to eleven point three. I found, in going by the house, I had to go by it and then back up and go forward and then back up again.
That's right, it's one way.
I know that. But I was only backing up. My question was the southern side driveway, which seems to straddle the line.
Yeah.
Who is using that driveway right now?
They're not, it's actually, the driveway for the southern neighbor is on their property, so this really, this access easement probably should go away. It's not being used by anybody. Okay? So it's, it's only four feet, or let's see, yeah, it's four feet, that easement is four feet, but there's a fence that divides it. So there's no driveway there that's on their property. It's, there's a driveway on the neighbor's property that is on their property.
I noticed the fence, and in this picture, the fence looks like it's right up against the house, which I know it's not.
Yeah, it's probably just that. Look at the, yeah...
When I, when I looked at, looked at it today, a second time, the corner of the fence is there, I didn't recognize that the fence was down the middle of the driveway.
Yeah.
There also, this must have been an older picture.
No, that's new, so there's no driveway there. So if you look at that picture where I'm standing is at the neighbor's driveway looking at the fence, and the fence is on the property line, I believe, right? Yeah. So that driveway, yeah, that driveway, and that little, there is a little bit of a rock wall that the neighbors, I assume, put in when they put the driveway in to level it out. But that picket fence is all on the property line. So the driveway that you see is the neighbor's backyard essentially, because they, they actually face Woburn, and their back of their house faces this, this driveway.
Yeah, I wasn't looking so much at the picket fence, I was looking at the vinyl...
Yeah, and that's also pretty much on the property line. Is that your fence, or did the neighbors put that in? That's what that is, yeah.
Would think, from what I'm seeing in the site plan, that that stone wall is your stone wall.
Probably, that must be.
You might want to clarify, because while you're showing a straight line on the property here, your fence jogs.
Yeah, it does see, you've got, there's this little stone wall.
Oh, yeah.
And then it jogs back.
Yes, I think it is ours.
And this has been there since you bought the house. Yes, yeah, so that, these are existing structures.
So there's no questions with the neighbors in regard to the location of the property line? It's been surveyed and marked and people know.
There's an easement that shows on our deed, but not on theirs, but aware of it.
Yeah, yeah, they're aware of it, yeah. That's interesting. But we're not putting any structures in that easement, so...
No, it's just an existing condition that's not being altered, it's just to ensure that all parties...
Yeah, know about it, yeah, it's a good idea.
And you're aware of what your full property line is, which according, I would suspect is the stone wall, is yours.
Right, it looks like that.
Like any future maintenance is in your, I would assume. But anyway, it's a small point, just looking at the, the discrepancy between what I see in a satellite photo.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Other than that, I didn't see any, any reasons why we couldn't honor the request. But I do want to go to our building commissioner, Amark, Dave Carvins.
Mr. Chairman, I just have one comment, which is really a point of order more than anything, on Ms. Toomey's extra documents that she supplied. Paragraph two, the home is non-conforming with both side yard setbacks, it is currently ten point five from the south side property line and thirteen point six from the north side property line. If you look at the front corner, it's actually twelve point one.
Oh, right.
From the north. It's just a point of order, it really doesn't matter to anything.
That's right.
Just a stickler for the numbers.
Yeah, that's good, I like that. Yeah, you're right, twelve point...
That's all I have.
Twelve point one is the closest, I was just looking at the back. Thank you.
And actually, the control document again here is the...
Block plan itself.
Site plan.
Well, I'll open the, the, this portion of the hearing to the public, if there are any individuals who wish to ask questions or make a comment. Seeing none?
Questions from the south side neighbor?
Absolutely. You did check in and put your name on the list.
I certainly, I certainly will, we're at eighty-nine Woburn Street.
Excellent.
Sure. Yeah, yeah, so...
And would, if you would stand?
Sure, yeah, sure, sorry.
Testimony, yes, testimony is given under oath, so do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, and your answer is I do?
I do.
Okay, and your name, your name and address for the record?
Chastley, eighty-nine Woburn Street. So, no, no comments, south side neighbor. I think functionally, we think about that stone wall on the fence as the property boundary, and so I don't think there would be any dispute about that. We had the, we purchased the house in two thousand fifteen and have a full survey, which I don't have on hand, but I think it'd be very easy to verify that. And we've spoken with, with Paul and Laura about the existing easement, which exists and really serves no purpose. I believe the history is, that was the guest home for eighty-nine Woburn Street over a century ago, and then they subdivided the property, and that's why it's not conforming. And I suspect that there was originally a driveway that occupied all of that space, so no issues, no other comments.
Now I do have then a question. Is the easement that is referred to there, is that recorded someplace?
We have to check. I don't have my files on hand, we were discussing this last night at a very high level.
Surveyor did mention that he found it?
Yes, on your, with your deed, yeah, but not on their deed, yeah. Could have an attorney take a look at it.
Yeah, we have, we have some hard documentation from a two thousand fifteen purchase. I do not have enough information to comment on the record about my knowledge of it, but...
Well, the uncertainty, I mean, that goes with it, since this decision is going to be reported also, and there are one of the stipulations, one of the conditions, who is to do that? is to do that? If it is, is recorded, that's fine. If it is not recorded, I think it would be in your best, both of your best interests to have it recorded, so that, again, at the time that you wish to move on and sell your property, either one of you, there is something on the record that is to follow, follow property in the document.
Yeah, I think we're in full agreement of that.
I would assume it is, since it is shown on the certified assess, excuse me, surveyor's plan, that the surveyor did find that, you know, in the registry, I would think. But he's not here, so.
That's, that's the reason I brought it up, and I think it's the same reason that Cal brought it up.
I would, I would think it's a real good chance that it is, but.
Yep.
Paul, you were saying it's on your, you have it, you have a record of it on your deed.
Correct.
Yeah, so it exists in at least one place.
Okay. Okay. Then I'll close the subject matter of the public hearing on this particular hearing. I'm in favor of that. Okay. I'll then accept a motion to move forward on this particular request. I'll make a motion. Cy.
I make a motion to grant the petitioners Laura Doherty and Paul Ray, a special permit, in the reading by law 7.3.2, constructive second story addition to an existing nonconforming dwelling on the property located at 35 Shoot Street in Redding, in accordance with plot plan of land dated November 20, 2018, entered certified by John D. Sullivan III, U rocks 2004, Woburn, Massachusetts, and architectural drawings sheets one through 10 dated August 14th, 2018, prepared by Toomey Design, Redding, Massachusetts. This permit is subject to the following conditions. The petitioners shall submit to the building inspector a certified plot plan of the proposed construction and proposed foundation plan prior to the issuance of a foundation permit for the work. Secondly, the petitioners shall submit to the building inspector final construction plans for the proposed structure, along with the as-built foundation plan for the structure prior to the issuance of a building permit. And third, the petitioners shall submit to the building inspector as-built plans of the new structure prior to the issuance of an occupancy permit.
You have a second?
Second?
I have seconds. Any questions? Ready for the vote? All in favor? Five zero zero, the voting members are the full-time, Nick, Bob, myself, Cy, and Eric. Okay. Having taken the vote and approval, you're all set. I do need to, I can stamp in. I need a second sec. Just a second with the works there.
We're all out. I tried both of them. It's the same one, yeah.
There you go.
Appropriates some funds.
Hey. You probably need that again, yeah, you're right. we?
Have we stamped it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Have to.
I have, anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next hearing is case number 19-0477, Summer Street. Now, the Fishers are here, I assume. Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing, selectmen's meeting room at Town Hall, 16 Wall Street, Redding, Mass. on Wednesday, March 6, 2019, at 7:00 p.m. on the applications of Daniel A. Damari pursuant to Master General Laws 48, Section 9, for special permit under the Redding Bylaw, Section 5.3.2, 5.4.7, and 7.3.2, to raise the existing screen porch in order to expand the kitchen, add a new screen porch, and create accessory apartment attached to existing nonconforming dwelling on the property located at 77 Summer Ave, Redding, Massachusetts. Unless there is an objection, I will dispass with the reading of the voters' list, except to say that the voters were notified, as were the following board, the Selectmen, Police Department, Building Department, Health Department, Engineering Division, Town Park Fire Department, Conservation Commission, Assessors Office, CPDC, and members and associate members of the Board of Appeals, as was the planning boards of Wakefield, North Redding, Woburn, Lynnfield, Stone, and Wilmington. Testimony given before this board is taken under oath, so if you wish, think you may wish to speak this evening, please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear that the testimony given before this board this evening will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay.
I've had it twice.
So you're doing double duty, so.
Double duty. Nancy Toomey, I'm the architect for this project as well. This home was built in 1930. Dan and Joe are here, and they're looking to do two things. And we've got a request in for a, an accessory apartment, which will be a single bedroom, and it is meant for their, for Jill's mother, Dottie, to live in. And, and then the other request we have is a special permit, because the house is nonconforming, and they are hoping to add on a screen porch at the back, which, because of the way the house is shaped, it's going to be closer to the side yard on the north side than the 15 feet allows. So the apartment will be completely conforming. It's on the side, it's the proposed one-story addition on the plot plan. It is on the side of the house. This property is up a hill, it's actually quite a bit of raised towards the back. And there's an existing paved driveway that's now being shared with their next-door neighbor on the south. So this addition will snug in in between. There's also, the main house is going to be expanded with a bigger kitchen towards the back, hence the removal of the existing screen porch, and a mudroom entry with a half bath. There isn't a current bath on the first floor for this particular house, so it's to add a, a half bath. That front's entry, that mudroom entry, there is a door currently there for the mother to be able to get between the home, the main home and her apartment, but its intended use is for the main dwelling, that's their primary, going to be the primary, well, the mudroom entrance, which always becomes the primary entrance after time. The actual house, the, I'm sorry, the apartment, the primary entrance will be off of the side, towards the back, where the driveway, now it doesn't show extended, but that's going to be extended back there. So that's the primary entrance for the, for the apartment. Secondary entrance will be into the screen porch. Let's see, what else can I tell you? So the, and then the special permit, as I said, is for the 14.4, which, because of the way the screen porch extends out and the property line on that side is getting closer, it becomes 14.4. The actual two-story garage is 2.5 on that side, so we are significantly better than the existing dwelling. That's a pretty close side yard setback, in my opinion. But anyway, the house was built in 1930, prior to zoning, so it's nonconforming. The apartment itself, just so we talked about the entrances, there won't be any main entrance to the apartment from the front. The entrance at the front is their mudroom entrance. The house itself is approximately 20, almost 2,900 square feet. The zoning bylaws allow one-third of the habitable finished space, including the basement, to be used to calculate how large an accessory apartment can be. So that allows us approximately 861 square feet. A thousand is the max, so we're well under 1,000 square feet. Public sewer, water service, everything's tied into the principal dwelling, and that all comes from the street. Any questions? I think that covers it. I, oh, I also have, I'm good at bringing pictures, I have a picture of the rear, because I'm sure you couldn't see it when you were taking it down, and also a picture of the side with the screen porch as well, so you can see what the back and side look like. It's hard to see off the front of the street.
Do you have a next one? Okay. Yeah. Yep. I'm going to start with Mark this time. Mark, you had a, some concerns on it. Of course, you did write the denial letter, so that's what we usually first go through, see what's your.
Actually, just for a correction, Glenn wrote the denial letter.
That's right.
Which is okay, you can ask.
Yep. Okay. So, more, I'll start with Eric this time.
So, just so I can kind of orient my.
Yes, yes, I know it's difficult, there's a lot going on.
No, it's, you've done a great job. On the certified plot plan.
Yes.
I see that it looks, I guess I can't quite make out the dimensions here. Are you just expanding the existing screen porch back?
Expanding the kitchen too, so.
I see, okay.
Okay, so you'll, yeah, the 16 by 27.76 is the screen porch, but between it and the main structure is actually, it's a very small extension of their kitchen.
Okay.
So, yeah, it's a little confusing, isn't it?
Yeah, well, sometimes these pictures do more damage.
Yeah, I know, exactly.
Be careful next time.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But, so in terms of the act, because you're asking for two special permits.
One is, yes, exactly.
So just bifurcating those, the, the addition in the back for the, the screen porch, I mean, it's existing, legal nonconforming, the existing nonconformity at its worst point is two and a half feet.
Right.
Yours, you're asking for 14.4.
Right.
You're not creating any new, or I should say, you're not making what's there any worse. I don't think that the construction that you've proposed here would have any sort of negative impact, so I, I don't have any issue with that. In terms of your accessory apartment, I guess I'll just take a stab at going through the performance standards, since you called on me first, John.
Okay.
So we have a series of them. The first one is, only one accessory apartment per lot can be created, which I think we've met. The accessory apartment shall have a gross floor area not to exceed the lesser of 1,000 square feet, or one-third of the gross, gross floor plan. I am prepared to take ISD's measurements, if they say your math is right.
[laughing]
I won't challenge it now that, that Mark's here, we don't have to guess.
Yeah.
So if he's good, I'm good. At least one of the owners of the lot containing the principal single family in accessory apartment shall reside there.
Yep.
You indicated that would be the case. The accessory apartment and any modifications, the principal single-family dwelling of the lot shall be designed so that the appearance of the principal dwelling remains that of a single-family dwelling. In my aesthetic interpretation of what you're doing here, in opinion, I think you've met that. I don't think that there's a question about, you know, the character of the house after you've done these renovations. All stairways to the primary entrance to the accessory apartment, located on the second or third story of the principal single-family dwelling, shall be enclosed within interior walls. I don't look like that's an issue. Where there are two or more entrances that exist on the front facade of the principal family dwelling, modifications made to such entrances in order to accommodate the special apartment shall result in one entrance appearing to be the principal residence, I'm sorry, the principal entry, and the other entrances appearing secondary. So I think the main entrance in is through the interior, right, if I'm not mistaken?
That's correct.
And the second means of egress is in the back on the side, so.
So, yeah, actually, the main, there's two entrances facing the front, so there's the main existing front door.
Okay.
We're adding a mudroom entrance to the principal dwelling.
Okay.
For the apartment, the actual entrance is off the side.
Okay.
Where the driveway is, and the second means of egress is through the screen porch.
Okay.
Okay? Even though they have a door that goes to the mudroom, that's really not their space.
Got it. All motor vehicles owned or maintained by the occupants shall be parked off the street and designated driveway. I don't see that there's any issue with that, I mean.
They have actually two driveways, one to the right to the garage for the main dwelling, and then this shared driveway that goes to their neighbor right now, and that is not under an easement. So the question is whether the other neighbor.
that the appearance of the principal dwelling remains that of a single-family dwelling. In my aesthetic interpretation of what you're doing here, in opinion, I think you've met that. I don't think that there's a question about, you know, the character of the house after you've done these renovations. All stairways to the primary entrance to the accessory apartment located on the second or third story of the principal single-family dwelling shall be enclosed within interior walls. It doesn't look like that's an issue. Where there are two or more entrances that exist on the front facade of the principal family dwelling, modifications made to such entrances in order to accommodate the special apartment shall result in one entrance appearing to be the principal residence, I'm sorry, the principal entry, and the other entrances appearing secondary. So I think the main entrance in is through the interior, right, if I'm not mistaken?
That's correct.
And the second means of egress is in the back on the side, so...
So, yeah, actually, the main, there's two entrances facing the front, so there's the main existing front door.
Okay.
We're adding a mudroom entrance to the principal dwelling. For the apartment, the actual entrance is off the side, where the driveway is, and the second means of egress is through the screen porch.
Okay.
Okay, even though they have a door that goes to the mudroom, that's really not their space.
Got it. All motor vehicles owned or maintained by the occupants shall be parked off the street and designated driveway. I don't see that there's any issue with that. I mean...
They have actually two driveways, one to the right to the garage for the main dwelling, and then this shared driveway that goes to their neighbor right now. And that is not under an easement. So the question is whether the other neighbor, at this point, is going to put their own driveway in. It was, you know, it's an old neighborhood. People have been there for a very long time, so this is sort of an agreement driveway. But we're not impacting it anyway, so that's beside the neighbor and the owners as to what they decide to do. But the intent is that Dottie will drive straight up and park next to her apartment.
Question for you on that, Nancy.
Yes.
So, I guess, because I'm not sure what's happening with the neighbor to the left of that.
Yeah.
So you've got this existing driveway, which has no easement rights.
No easement rights, correct.
I mean, maybe a prescriptive adverse possession, who knows?
Who knows, at this point, yeah.
I mean, I see that it kind of branches off, and then there's a, you know, if it goes straight back and it kind of terminates at the end there.
Yeah.
I mean, are you, I guess, is the plan to maybe move that over so that the whole thing is on the lot?
Correct, yeah, correct. That's what's going to happen. That end will straighten out and go straight. But keep in mind, there is a pretty dramatic change in level.
Okay.
So from the street, he doesn't have the street, but even from the front, it's 95.5, and by the back, it's 102. So there's quite an elevation change, which is a good thing for Jill's mother, because now she can enter her apartment pretty much, able to get in. She's actually probably my age, so she's, but that's the intent, that it will work out. The dry, I just wanted to point out, but that driveway is shared right now. For whatever reason, never put their own driveway, as now it's going to be used by this, by Dottie. I don't know, but that's something that will be worked out.
Okay. I mean, it's on your land. It doesn't look like they have any issues.
Correct.
You know, or claims that...
No, that's right.
...exist right now, that they, I mean, who knows what they might be able to do.
Yeah.
But I guess, you know, it's still your land. I suppose you just wouldn't have a problem, you know, just passing over it to get back to the...
Correct.
Because the entrance there, so...
Correct. We're not blocking that or intending to block it. They may choose to change it themselves onto their property, but that's their prerogative.
All right. Just continuing with the performance standards, both the single-family dwelling and the accessory apartment will be connected to public water and sanitary sewer systems, no issue there. Accessory apartment may not be occupied by more than three people. Sounds like it's just one person right now?
Yeah, one bedroom.
Next one doesn't apply, because it's not a carriage house or detached structure. And detached, well, it's actually attached, so I don't think we have to worry about performance standard number K. And I think that's it. So those are, I guess, my only comments, so that's all I got.
Sure. Well, I kind of, after reviewing this one, kind of viewed it a little like the previous one we just went through. Quite straightforward. And I think the addition they're talking about, the accessory apartment they're talking about, as they just went through, seem to comply with all the requirements. And again, I don't see any creation of any new non-conformity, other than those that already exist. So I have no further questions, comments. I'm comfortable. Okay. Robert?
Sure. Nancy, when did you say this was built, 1930?
1930 is it said on the assessor's card. Built in 1930. Do you have an assessor, do you want the assessor's card? I've got a copy of it if you would like it.
We asked for them, but we didn't get them, so...
Yeah, I've, well, yeah.
Right, I thought I heard you say originally, yeah.
Yeah. Did I not put them in the packet this time? That's terrible. Here, this is...
All right.
You're welcome to have it.
Yeah, that's the one typically we usually get. For some reason, we didn't get it this time. And they usually have, yeah, the year built, 1930 or so.
Yeah, you can have that.
Okay, John, maybe...
Yeah, put it in the record. I must have forgotten to put that in.
No problem.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Yep, we got it. Yeah, I kind of looked at it in two aspects, in that you do need the two special permits on this. Again, I have no issue with the back, the screen porch going in, the small addition to your main structure there. All appears to be within the, you might say, the allowed building footprint, in that, yeah, you're still 14 feet, but that...
Yeah.
Judging the main structure of the house, which I was surprised when I went by, yeah, when I first looked at the plot plan, you look at this and you figure it might be drive down, but now when you go by, it's chewed up, and the garage is at ground level, and then there is a second story above it.
Correct.
And that's only two and a half feet at its closest point, and the new addition's going to be 14.4 feet.
Right.
Again, this is similar to the previous one. You won't be seeing any of the addition from the street at all. Now, when we look at the apartment, I think everything has been met pretty much. Eric went over all that. I did have a question on the driveway when I was looking at it, and the, the person in the apartment is going to have an automobile.
Correct.
And that will be parked on that left side driveway?
Yes, correct, so...
And that's, I'm glad you went over that, because that was a question I had, you know, how this all works, that driveway there. And I was glad you noted that, because that, at the end of the driveway, where typically that, the apartment dweller is going to park, straddles the property line.
Correct, and that's going to get...
And that's fine. I mean, you would just have to work something out, and then, if you had, you would present it to us that, you know, that they are going to be using it. Because obviously, that person to the south uses that driveway to get to access their property. So there might be something there. But I think right now, based on what you had said, I would put a condition on this, that the automobile or the car should be parked completely on the property owner's lot.
Ideally, it's going to be parallel to the street, to allow for my mother-in-law to, you know, and exit.
It's going to be parallel to somewhere out?
Yes.
Oh, you're going to, you mean perpendicular?
I don't think you want to do that.
Parallel means along the street.
You mean part here.
So if, I'm thinking behind the apartment.
Oh, you're going to have a turn around.
Oh, behind the turn, and turn behind the property.
Yeah, so that it can pull out.
Okay, I'm thinking in the front, and I'm saying you can't do it in the front yard.
There's a shed there now.
Okay, so it would be in the backyard.
Yeah, sounds like my...
And that makes sense to me, because you would drive up, make your turn, and then you'd have to allow it to back out and come down the driveway forward.
Right.
I think that'd be a difficult driveway to come down in reverse, you know?
We've done it. It's difficult, especially in the winter.
Okay. The other thing, and I don't know if you have any with you, Nancy, is any architectural elevation view at the front, what this apartment's going to look like.
Yeah, the...
And like, we like to look at the, that we like on these apartments, accessory apartments, because it's supposed to look like a single-family home from the front and stuff. And that's what we like to look at, yeah.
So, yeah, the apartments.
Yeah, okay, okay, I see. And this door here is, that's the mudroom door that's going to be part of the main house, that that goes to. That's not part of the apartment, okay?
She can get to her apartment through it if she wants to, but her entrance is off the side.
It's on the side, is...
Yeah, yeah, if you turn the page, you'll see the other side too.
Yeah, did you want to see that?
I have...
Oh, I didn't see it in my packet.
Yeah.
I think I only hit two.
Oh, there were two sets, yes. One was showing the calculation, so...
I don't, yeah, I don't think it...
No, you didn't get it.
Oh, here, you, oh my goodness.
That's all right. No, I saw it, it's fine.
And this is the side entrance to the apartment.
Yeah, oh, okay.
We may have that set, that's yours.
Nick might want to take a look.
I actually have that.
You have that?
Yep.
Yeah, I didn't get it.
Oh.
Okay, yep. So, you know, those are the questions I had, and it looks now that she's met the, they've met the requirements of the addition, the special permit for the addition. I don't see it would be any for the detriment to the neighborhood. And then they appear to have met all the criteria required for an accessory apartment, I see. Nick?
Yeah, I agree with everything said thus far. I think Eric did a great job summing up the performance standards for the special permit for this accessory dwelling in an S-15 district, and as far as the special permit for the porch, I have no issue with that. That's all I have to add.
I have some questions, because I don't see a complete presentation of how the front entrance is actually working yet. Inasmuch as in the photo...
Yep.
There is a staircase that is not drawn on the elevation.
No, not on the front elevation. That staircase goes up to the front porch, but by the time you get to the mudroom, you're pretty level with the ground. So if you look at the side elevation, I just gave my...
Hold on, the front though, right now.
Turn, turn the page, and you'll see the way the grade goes up.
Yes, no, I saw that.
Yeah, so, so there's not, there's only going to be one or two steps up to the mudroom, because the ground is pretty steep. Is that what your question was? I'm sorry?
No.
Okay.
It's that I see two entrances on this building.
Correct. So the main entrance is the front porch, which is there now. And then we're creating to the left a mudroom entrance, or a side entrance to the main house, with a half bath associated with it and closet space. So that side entrance is actually the main house entrance. And then the windows you see to the left on the main entrance, the single-story here. So this is, this is entrance, second entrance to the main house, the mudroom entrance. So when they park up there, they can get in. And then those are windows to the bedroom. And then the side elevation shows the entrance to the apartment.
Yeah. So I guess I'm concerned that the design, the way that I'm trying to piece and see it together, presents two entrances on the front facade.
Correct, it does.
That look like it's a dual, to me, I don't read this as being an entrance to this building. But drawing the question, the conformity to the bylaw, that it needs to have a single entrance in the front, doesn't look like it's an entrance to two buildings.
So in most homes that I design, usually you have a side entrance that leads to a mudroom or a secondary way to get into the house, that actually everybody uses, because that's where you take your boots off, you hang your coats up, and then you proceed into the main house. That's what's been designed here. So when we extend to the side, we're actually creating more space for the main house. It's not space to be used by the apartment, although since it's...
There is an entrance right through that I can get into the other apartment.
That's correct, because it's their mother. She wants to be able to come and go into their main house when she wants. She just wants to go outside to get back in.
So I guess I'm still confused, because the language that you're using is saying that the mud entrance is going to become the main entrance.
It's my interpretation, yeah. Everybody usually, except for the pizza delivery guy, usually comes in the side entrance when you, when you are going to a house these days. It's just the way nature is. But the main entrance is the front porch still.
That's functionality. I guess I mostly just don't understand the appearance and the presentation.
Sure, sure.
And that it feels to me that the neighborhood could view this as two main entrances, two entrances, one to one house and one to, and an added-on abode. Because we have a very significant staircase, which is not represented in the drawings here. It's not on the front elevation, it's missing from the side elevation here.
Yeah, that's an existing, yeah, the existing stairs that go up, yeah, because it comes from the street. I guess what I would say to you is the way I designed this is that what looks to the left doesn't look like an apartment at all. No one would know that that's an apartment, because it is just simply an extension of the main house. The apartment is hidden by the door behind it. So, you know, on the side. So I guess it's just, you know that it's an apartment, but I would say anybody driving by probably wouldn't know that that was an apartment. It's pretty consistent with the style and character of the house. And the neighborhood most have secondary entrances to their homes in the neighborhood. Not all, but some do.
Where are the steps for the mudroom? It's also not in the plan.
Yeah, there's only one or two steps up, because the ground...
So it's outside of the hatch area that's shown, not in the area that's shown. It's just not drawn, correct?
I don't know that we need one, because we're going to be pretty close to ground.
So the elevation is represented...
Oh, there you go, there's two, okay.
So it's represented here, so that's what I'm trying, like...
Yeah, there might be one or two steps up, depending upon how they grade that at the end. It is hard, because it's such a hill. And they go up that hill, and the house levels out halfway up that hill, so...
Yeah. I am concerned that it does have a duality of looking like a separate entrance to a different building, which is further in my mind expressed by the fact that it is set back, it's a one-story building. And the lead-up with what I assume might be the landscaping pathway to get there, being that it's spoken of as being the main entrance to the existing house, but yet you have a very large staircase on this existing porch.
Yeah, that's the main entrance. I probably am not using the right terminology.
That itself has two main entrances.
So I'm not using the right terminology. The, as you look at the house, the main entrance is definitely the one off the porch. Everybody will read that as the formal, let's call it formal entrance. The side entrance is a less formal entrance. My intent was to say that most people feel comfortable going in a side entrance versus a formal entrance.
This is true. It's an understanding of the perception then to the neighborhood, you'd say. Not that anybody in the neighborhood is going to be functionally entering it, so they're not going to know the difference in terms of what's behind door one and two, other than it could have and lend itself to the appearance that, the duplex with a separate entrance to each building, given the formal nature of the way that the mudroom is presented, landscaping coming up to it, and the front staircase itself. I guess I don't have, at this point, a clear description here, both of a landscaping plan to understand how that's going to be done with a pathway, or no pathway, that would make it look like it's really a secondary entrance and not a new entrance to an addition. So the drawings are a little bit leaving me questioning, because it's not fully presented. And when I look at the street perspective here, and I imagine that the building is added on, given also the setback, I could feel like it's a whole separate entrance to a duplex.
Well, Kyle, I will tell you, when you look at the rest of Summer Street, up and down, you find a lot of houses that have multiple entrances in the front, over time, that have occurred. I had three concerns, one of which was that, and the only thing I could think of, because we've faced this before, is the side entrance, the mudroom entrance, has got to be more of a plain Jane type of entryway, where you would enhance the front door to make it look that way.
Right. And I guess it...
Just a suggestion.
Yeah, so one thing to keep in mind is that side entrance is set back with a roof over it even further.
Six feet, I see that. And that's, that's what made it a little bit more acceptable, because you don't, you don't perceive it that way, although across the street you have two houses that are a little bit more.
Yeah. So, and it's even more than six feet, because it's six feet to the face of the addition and the edge of the roof, but the door itself sits back another four feet, because it's a covered porch. So it, even from a shadow line, it's a minor little porch compared to the main porch with the big stairs that go up to it. So, and it's also treated like it is in set, and right now I'm showing vertical siding instead of horizontal siding. So it does show that it's sort of like that back entrance off of a, you know, off of a structure that you typically see in most homes. a, a structure that you typically see in most homes.
I told you I had three. That was the least of the three.
Okay, good.
The second was the actual driveway that has been brought up already. Bob brought it up and I think Eric brought it up also. Again, if the, if the neighbors next door are going to use that, as I said in the first hearing, and you've been at this long enough, that unless there is something in writing in agreement, this doesn't, this doesn't fit the bill.
Correct.
You're going to have to exclude that person from using this driveway because we don't know what happens down the road. So I would think that something in there would be a condition that a, an agreement would be put together and, uh, registered in the registry of deeds so that future owners down the road, there's, there's not going to be a question about that. I mean, right now, accessory apartments are great. We don't know how long an accessory apartment is going to last. That's just what it is. It's accessory, and if you sell the house, the new owner's going to have to come in and verify to the building inspector that all the criteria have been met. So Mark is going to get it back in his lap again. But I think because parking is a major aspect of the performance criteria, you need to address that. And I don't know how to get that into the final decision. Okay, now the first one, the one I had the most difficulty with. I don't see your calculations. And when I looked at it, on the existing portion of it, you didn't have any calculations. You mentioned that part of the basement was part of your calculations to reach the 800.
Yes. So on the, the one sheet that has the shaded area-
Existing area?
Yeah, it's the, the sheets that were just the plans that were shaded.
Ah, okay.
That's where the calculations are located.
But now you, you mentioned, because we're taking the calculations from the existing structure right now.
Correct.
Tell me how you figured out that you had 2,700.
Right. So it's the existing structure and, and the extension, because that becomes the main body of the house. So that's, so the first floor is the extension of the kitchen and the mudroom becomes one calculation for the first floor. So, of course, I don't have my glasses. And then the second, and I, I call that out underneath, total floor existing, ugh, I don't have my glasses on, I apologize, 900 and something. The bigger drawings have it better. The basement floor, and this is also, the assessors, actually, the assessors' number is higher. So this is a little lower than, on the existing building, including the basement. That's finished down there. I took out part of the utility space. For some reason, I think they, assessors must have included the whole utility space.
We, we already know, we've been through this so many times.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You can't follow the assessors.
And what's on the assessors' card is not accurate.
Correct. That's why I recalculated it myself to make sure that there was some accuracy, but it made me feel better that I was less than the assessors' department rather than more. So the basement, the, it's hard, but this is a mudroom off of the garage that's finished. This is utility space, so it has heating and, so I, I took that as not, even though it's semi-finished, I didn't include that in the calculation in the basement. But these are all finished rooms. There's a bathroom, a laundry room, mudroom, and living space. That's the basement, all finished and heated. The second floor was pretty straightforward, actually. It was the entire structure is all finished and used. And then, and including over the garage, there's, there's space, closet and a bedroom. And then the main house is pretty straightforward. And then I added the small extra space for the kitchen-
Kitchen?
...that we're adding and the mudroom space that we're adding. Because that space is for the main house. I'm showing a door there because they want to allow her to come in and out, but it's not her space. That's open to the main house. So those were the calculations. And I, I don't have, I, I'm sorry, my gla, my eyes are bad, but the first floor existing I show is 986, and then I added the new, which became 212, I think, square feet. So the total was 1,267 on the, on the first floor. Do you see how I broke that out so you could see the existing, what's going to be new for the main house? And that gets me the total for the first floor of existing, of, of the house, right? These are the calculations.
Now, you did not include the existing screen porch, nor did you include the proposed new screen porch.
I did not, no, no. And the reason for that, Glenn- Glenn and I have been having strong difficulties as to what is included and what isn't included. And we've kind of agreed at this point that anything that isn't heated or has walls does not get included in the calculations. So the screen porch wouldn't be included one way or the other, so they were not part of this calculation, for that reason.
And I think in the performance criteria, I think it was-
Says walls and living, I, it, yeah, it needs to be, as we all know, there needs to be some discussion on these bylaws to try and hone in a little bit closer to what the intent is for some of it. We've had that discussion.
And, and the other section of that was in B, where it says it's one-third of the gross floor area of the principal, single-family dwelling on the lot.
Correct.
Which means basically the existing. You're adding into that the proposed addition. And I know it comes back because I've had this discussion so many times with, with Glenn since the new bylaw was adopted. Technically, what you're doing is you're saying, I'm coming in to get the, well, we have two requests from you for waivers. One is the, for the sun porch.
Correct. Uh, screen porch, yeah.
Screen porch. And the other one is for the accessory apartment. The screen porch is all by itself. When you put in, when you put in the accessory apartment with the new bylaw, the question is, well, technically, you need to put on the addition, leave out the, leave out the kitchen-
Right.
-and then after it's done, come back again, all over again, and do it.
Correct.
And the re, and the justification is that technically, if you follow the letter of the law, that's what you're supposed to do. And if, if this is the way that we're going to work with attached accessory apartments, we need to get it into the bylaw to fix it correctly so that there is no question of how it's being interpreted. Because this board has always tried to follow the same suit over and over and over as cases come in. And since that bylaw's put in, 50% of our cases have been accessory apartments. So let's get it straight. I don't know when it's coming up, but I'm, the word is already set for April, so it's not going to come up until the fall. And through the summer, probably get another 10 or 12 cases coming in, but I, I need to know, as one member of the board, how we're going to react to that. And Mark, if you and Glenn need to get together to figure out how this is going to work, that's fine with me, but right now, I have a problem with that. But in lieu of exactly where you're going and all this stuff is done, I can't see it coming back and forth, but it's got to get fixed. I mean, CPDC believes that this is small potatoes, but it's not small potatoes when you're adding down the road. Forget about now, because everybody knows what's happening now. It's when the house is sold or when something else happens, and that accessory apartment is no longer in the family type of thing and you can't control it, you're renting it out, all, all the rest of the stuff that goes along. It makes, for the building commissioner, I mean, a very difficult time. So we're trying to include all that together. So those are the three issues that I had. I can get by the first one with the, with the fact that they, the one that I mentioned, the one I leased, that Kyle brought up. I can get past that if you modify the doorway in the front and make sure that it's more prominent. The second one, the driveway, I can get past that provided you put something in writing and get it registered for the protection of not only the owner but for the neighbor because, right now, neighbors are fine.
Yeah.
But what happens if they sell theirs and you get a new neighbor? And the neighbor says it's been used for 27 years, so don't tell me that, that's not part of my driveway. So down the road, I'd like to see some of that stuff fixed. And that's the only comments that I had, guys. Okay. Yeah, now, go ahead. I didn't have a problem with the areas, John. You know, as you said, looking at her calculations and the way things were, and obviously she is, they are, and, and it isn't just a screen porch, maybe that's a misnomer or something, because it is, they are extending out another two or three feet-
Yeah, right. For the kitchen.
To, for the kitchen.
Yeah.
And so when you start taking an outside wall down to do that, that, that's, that's kind of major. So anyway, that, that's, it's an addition and a screen porch.
Right.
And then over to the side, the, the actual apartment is right to here, then it comes along here, that's the mudroom that goes with the main house, comes along like that. You know, yeah, they, they could add that in the front and do this addition, you might say, by itself and not the apartment.
Right.
And if they did that, that is the area that they would have. And that's the way I look at it, and, and that's what she's used of her calculations. And I don't have an issue with that at all, with the calculation. Okay. Anybody else?
Excuse me. So in terms of the driveway, if I'm understanding what you're suggesting, at least as a germinating condition for the special permit, you're looking for something recorded, but I, from what I see-
Well, you're the attorney, so you need to tell us.
Well, I'm just clarifying, and I want to be clear, I'm not the petitioner's attorney, I'm not offering any legal advice or anything like that. But I don't know what they would be able to produce because the driveway's already on their land. Do you know what I mean? Like, they wouldn't, I mean, who would, they get it from? Themselves? Do you know what I mean? So would you be comfortable if we had a condition that parking was restricted to the left side of the house? Only because I, I don't know what you could get signed.
That's, that's what I would suggest.
Do you know what I'm saying? I mean, I, I mean, if you do, I, I, let me know. I'm just, I just don't know what the other side would sign, because the, the land that you're talking about is already theirs.
Yeah. And that's exactly what I would suggest, is we put a condition in in this, you might say a fourth condition there to our standard ones, that access and parking for the accessory apartment will take place wholly on the petitioner's lot, period, on the property owner's lot. And just leave it at that and let them straighten out where, you know, if they want to let the other person use it or if they don't, but just, you know, so we're on record and it is a condition and it's recorded that access and parking for the accessory apartment should take place wholly on the property owner's lot. Leave it at that. That's what I would suggest.
Do you want to specify which side? Um, it doesn't matter. I mean, I guess-
Yeah, no, that's a good point. I would say on the-
I think it should be on that one side or the other.
On, on the left side.
Outside.
Generally, generally, and maybe this is what you do, generally as shown on the plot plan.
Unfortunately, it looks like you guys have two curb cuts, right? I mean, obviously, you know-
Yeah.
-pre-existing before you had to get the permits for them.
Right, exactly.
But I mean, you know, you've got them there and why not use them, right?
Yeah, right. Exactly.
Yeah.
Those are, that was my only comment.
Mark, how do you feel about this whole discussion? Well, since, since you're, you're a parent now and following forward, um-
No, I mean, I, I hear your frustration with the way the gross square footage is listed and, and how their-
Calculations are made?
That's a good word, how the calculations are made to, to suit their needs, which is fine. But it has to be adjusted and, I mean, I have no problem how this is proposed and-
Okay.
But something needs to happen in the future.
Okay. Any other comments from the board members?
I don't have a hangup over the dual appearance of two entries.
Thank you.
It's clear to me that the main entrance is over the porch into the front, okay? The side entrance is set back. You said you're going to put a little roof over it?
Yeah, it's part of, so the, it's a main roof over the whole structure, and then the door itself actually sits in. So it's a porch, but it's the same roof across, so as I'm, I don't have my elevations anymore, but if you look at the front elevation, the door actually inserts into the face of the addition four feet. So it, it'll appear as if it's really a side entrance that's set back.
I'm not uncomfortable with that at all.
See, six, six feet here and then another four feet.
Four feet to where the door is, so it'll be actually under shadow and it's not-
I don't have that hangup with it. As John mentioned, there's a lot of other housing properties on that street that have two entries.
Right, exactly. I think if it were faced-
The driveway, the condition that Bob and, and Eric were talking about, it sounds like a responsible approach to that thing and the square footage, uncomfortable with what you did.
Anybody else? I'll open the public section of the hearing this evening. I only see two people in the room unless someone could say something.
Sounds like it just happened.
Did you comment at all?
No, but I-
Okay, then I'll close the subject matter of the public hearing for this case, all in favor. I mean-
Delicious.
I, you know, in the, in the past, we haven't done that, but at the 40B, apparently, uh, so I, you know, I don't know what to say about it anyways.
You're used to it.
Well, hearing nothing, I'll take a motion from somebody.
I'd be glad to do it. I'm going to take it.
Yeah. I move to grant the petitioner, Daniel Damari, right? A special permit, and I'll do it in two, we have to do it in two special permits on there. A special permit, uh, under Reading zoning bylaws. I believe this will, let's see, which one is for the addition?
The first two.
Yeah, I think it's five-
The first two, 5.32 and 5.47.
Yeah, that's right. Five, uh, 5.32 and, uh, 5.47, uh, to demolish the existing screen porch at the rear of the house in order to expand the kitchen and add a new screen porch to the existing non-conforming dwelling on the property located at 77 Summer Avenue, Reading, Mass. Generally, in conformance with a certified plot plan prepared by John D. Sullivan, a professional engineer, titled Plot Plan of Land 77 Summer Avenue, Reading, Massachusetts, dated January 17th, 2019. And in general conformance with the relevant architectural plans prepared by Tumi Design. And those are listed, and those are dated January 22nd, 2019, and sheets number one through nine.
And you have a second one.
A, I think, which is the actual- Well, those are the, yeah, those are the, uh-
The actual accessory apartment, existing structure.
Yeah, okay, I'll, I'll make reference to the same thing, to the plans also by Tumi Design dated January 22nd, 2019, one, one, two, and three of three. And all under, and these, this special permit is subject to the following conditions. And all under, and these, this special permit is subject to the following conditions. Petitioner shall submit to the building inspector a certified plot plan of the proposed construction and proposed foundation plans prior to the issuance of a foundation permit for the work. And the petitioner's final construction plans for the new structure shall be submitted to the building inspector, along with all as-built foundation plans prior to the issuance of a building permit. And as-built plans showing the completed construction shall be submitted to the building inspector immediately after the work is completed and prior to the issuance of an occupancy permit. And I don't believe we need the fourth condition on this particular motion, because this is the construction, the expansion, the addition to the house, not the accessory apartment I'm making the motion for, right? Yeah. So that's it, just those three special conditions right now added to the addition.
Do we hear a second?
Second.
Next sentence. Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor? Five, zero, zero. Okay, second motion.
And now the second motion would be, I move to grant the petitioner, Daniel Damari, a special permit under Reading zoning bylaws, section 7.3.2, to create an accessory apartment attached to an existing non-conforming dwelling on the property located at 77 Summer Avenue in Reading, Massachusetts. As shown is on the certified plot plan prepared by John D. Sullivan, professional engineer, Woburn, Mass., dated January 17th, 2019, entitled Plot Plan of Land 77 Summer Avenue, Reading, Mass. And in accordance with the architectural design plans prepared by Tumi Design, we have two sets here, and I'll note both sets, sheets number one, two, and three of three, dated 1/22/19, and sheets, and sheets one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine of nine, dated 1/22/19, prepared by Tumi Design, architectural plans. With the conditions again, that the petitioner shall submit to the building inspector a certified plot plan of the proposed construction and proposed foundation plans for the accessory apartment prior to the issuance of a foundation permit for the work. And the petitioner's final construction plans for the new structure or accessory apartment shall be submitted to the building inspector along with the as-built foundation plans prior to the issuance of a building permit. And three, as-built plans showing the completed construction shall be submitted to the building inspector immediately after the work is completed and prior to the issuance of an occupancy permit for the accessory apartment. And number four, that access driveway and parking for the accessory apartment shall be located on the southerly side of the lot, wholly on the property or the, of the property owner's lot, wholly within the confines of the property lines.
Can we hear a second for that one?
Second, that too.
Any discussion? Seeing ready for the vote, all in favor? Five, zero, zero. Okay. Thank you, Nancy. Let me stamp these in. Nancy, the larger size that you have in the actual folder is one through nine?
Yes, correct.
Oh, 19 dash oh four.
Does somebody have the, put this back in the actual copy of one through...
One through nine?
No, I have one through nine.
You got the one through three?
Yeah.
I'm gonna need him to refer to one I read.
Yeah, we need to... One through three. I would like one to... Oh. Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
And the last case we have for us this evening is case number 19 dash oh five. Zoning Board of Appeals, before the public hearing, this documents meeting room at Town Hall, 16 Lowell Street, Reading, Massachusetts, on Wednesday, the 6th of March, 2019, 7:00 PM. On the application of Integrity Building Design Incorporated on behalf of Rich and Judy Swanson pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 9, for special permit under Reading zoning bylaws, Section 7.3.2, to construct a new second-story addition with a non-conforming side yard setback to an existing non-conforming dwelling on the property located at 352 Summer Ave. in Reading, Massachusetts. Unless there is an objection, I will dispense with the reading of the abudist list, except to say that the abudists were notified, as were the Board of Selectmen, Police Department, Building Department, Health Department, Engineering Division, Town Clerk, Fire Department, Conservation Commission, Assessor's Office, CPDC, and members and associate members of the Board of Appeals, as well as the planning boards of Wakefield, Reading, Woburn, Lynnfield, Stoneman, Wilmington. Testimony given before this board is taken under oath, so if you think you may wish to speak this evening, please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear that the testimony given before the board this evening will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, you have the call.
Thank you. I'm Dana McKeel from Integrity Building and Design, on behalf of Rich and Judy Swanson. As you just stated, we're here for a non-conforming lot that is based on a side setback on just the left side of the property. What we'd like to do is construct, remove the existing deck that's on the back of the house and construct a two-story addition. And basically, from this elevation right here is really the extension of the second floor. There's no, then there's also a first-floor addition on the left side of the property that would only be one story. So in keeping, the addition really keeps with what really is here, it just juts out the back of the house. It's to create a family room, mudroom, and bathroom on the first floor, and then a bedroom extension on the second floor. And that's, we're not going any, we're non-conforming on that left side of the property, the addition is staying, you know, in parallel with the garage and the property line. That's really it.
Any questions or comments?
I guess at the same time, the 25-foot maximum ratio floor area coverage, it's only at 22% so it's not, that's not, there's no issues there as far as that.
Mark, you wrote the denial letter on this one.
Well, based on denial letter, you could see that I mentioned that it's non-conforming due to the side setback in the lot area, the existing lot. Also, what's not mentioned in my denial letter is non-conforming due to frontage, but it's just a typical extension of a non-conforming structure.
Questions from board members? How are you all good, I have none?
Let's just comment that I don't think it's any more non-conforming, you know, exacerbating the existing non-conformity. I don't see it being any more judgmental to the neighborhood. I don't feel that.
Yeah, similar to a couple of the other cases we've heard tonight, it's a non-conforming lot we're talking about here in the S-15 zoning district, I think, non-conforming structure based on its closeness to the side setback here on northly, northwesterly property line on that, which is eight feet. The addition is going to be seven, excuse me...
Seven point eight is what it is.
Eight feet to the addition, seven point eight feet to the existing. So we're not increasing the non-conformity at all. And again, like the other members that have noted, I do not see that this would be substantial, substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than what's already exists there. I'm comfortable with it.
Okay. Sorry.
I was going to say what Bob said, it's not too dissimilar to the previous two, it's kind of straightforward. The plot plan as I see it, but not the kind of plot plan we normally are seeing, it's...
But it's...
But I have no problem being able to interpret a such big a decision.
It is stamped and...
It's stamped and everything else is certified.
It's noted, it is a certified.
So I don't have any real problem. I don't have any problem.
Okay. Eric?
The only question I have is, we're saying that it's legal, non-conforming, but I don't see anything about when it was built. And for it to be legal and non-conforming, it has to be there prior to the issuance of, you know, the zoning regulations.
And again, we don't have the assessor's card here, so we have no idea what the background is. I mean, the assessors card that we have, doesn't really give us any of the materials that we usually look at.
Oh, you have, is that this one?
Yeah.
Is it in 1930s?
Yeah, usually it'll say right in here. Yeah, Bill, yeah, 1930.
Wonderful.
Thanks, Eric.
Take care of it. Sorry, I, new guy, new guy here, I'm sorry. It's my third one in the last two months, and I'm sorry to get you down, and I apologize.
And we know the...
I got to Littleton the end of the month, so...
Not necessarily gospel, but it's...
Hey, it's something to hang our hats on.
That's what we have written, yeah.
I don't have a time machine, I've got to go to the assessor's card.
It certainly beats, what was, when's the only come in, John, 1946?
1942.
1942.
Well, with that said, Mr. Chairman, I have no questions or problems with the project as proposed.
Okay. Well, we don't know if any, we assume that there was no addition put on the property, we don't have the card in front of us, very difficult to see that, but... Very difficult to see that, but, um, I, I looked at it very similarly, I mean, you're within the setback of the existing, uh, nonconformity already. So asking for that, uh, is in compliance. I don't see, again, as was mentioned by the other members of the, of the board, it's any more detrimental to the, uh, to the neighborhood than exists right now. You're going back, you're not going, you're not going out front, you are going to the side, but, uh, so I don't, I don't have any major problems with that at all as presented. Any other comments from the board? Now, with the puppet portion of the hearing, and unless there is, nobody wishes to speak, I'll close the subject matter of the puppet, to the public hearing. And then I'll ask if there is anybody who wishes to make a motion, um, as presented before us on Section, uh, seven point three point two. Actually, you had checked off two sections on the, uh, on the application. One was the appeal from the decision, uh, slash order of the building inspector, which, as you presented now, it appears that you're not looking to follow through on, are you?
I'm sorry, since I'm new here, I did what the bill inspector told me to check off, so I, I don't, what did I do? What box are you seeing, or what, what?
You appealed by denial, and you requested a special permit.
And that's why he's here, like, coming before the board.
Yeah.
In essence, overturning that.
That's why he was denied, because he has to come here.
Right, I got a denial letter from the bill inspector, because I couldn't get a building permit, because I wasn't conforming, or the lot's not conforming.
Yes, which, which you understood when you came here, and that's why you checked off the special permit in accordance with it, which is part of Mark's letter. So you, but by checking that off, you're first asking, uh, for the board to, uh.
Overturn the building inspector's.
Overturn the building inspector's decision.
Why can't he not withhold that?
Well, I'm just to that point.
Okay, I wanna withdraw that. Okay, sorry, I apologize.
I don't think you need, I mean.
I don't know if you need.
It states in his letter that the reason he denied it was because he needs special permit, and that's what he's here for.
But it's, but it's checked off and it was advertised.
It's clean.
So if you're asking for withdrawal of the.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
So that's the first thing they will accept and move on, and then the second will be the actual special permit. So do I have somebody who's willing to put forth a motion?
Going to do both, the withdrawal and then the special permit? Perfect. So move to accept the petitioner's request to, uh, I guess, withdraw his appeal from the decision slash order of the building inspector.
Second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor? Five zero zero. Then the second motion.
And I will make a second motion, excuse me, that the board approve the petition, um, of Integrity Building and Design on behalf of Rich and Judy Swanson, who seek a special permit pursuant to Reading bylaw, Section seven point three point two, in order to construct a new two-story addition with a nonconforming side yard setback of the property located at three fifty-two Samarav, Reading, Massachusetts, um, as depicted on a certified plot plan dated January twenty-fifth, two thousand and nineteen, prepared by David E. Ross Associates, and stamped by Mark K. Wheeler, professional land surveyor, and as further depicted in design renderings, pages one through four, dated January thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen, and prepared by Integrity Design. Conditions on this special permit is conditioned upon the following. The petitioners shall submit to the building inspector a certified plot plan of the proposed construction and proposed foundation plans prior to the issuance of a foundation permit for the work. The petitioner's final construction plans for the new structure shall be submitted to the building inspector along with the as-built foundation plans prior to the issuance of a building permit. And the petitioner shall submit as-built plans to the building inspector showing the completed construction immediately after the work is completed and prior to the issuance of an occupancy permit.
I'll have a second for that one.
Second?
Nope, seconds. Any discussion? No discussion. All in favor? Five zero zero again.
Thank you. I'm standing, I'm.
All right, can I borrow your.
Okay.
Yep, yep. Yep.
That looks close. Question, what was, what are you looking for for the plot plan? I'll pass on to the engineer. You mentioned that you weren't, it's not normal, or what wasn't? What is, what is, I mean, I'm from Acton, and so the engineer's from Harvard.
Well, that was just.
Well, the plot plan was just done. Two months, three months.
It's just an odd setup with the proposed addition to the side.
Yeah, we were just, uh, it was trying to blow up the factor of what? That, and this is the existing condition.
Yeah, exactly.
There's not a board, there's not a border on.
Well, okay.
Typically, I think if you go to the registry of deeds.
Okay.
You would see a client's by the registry, and the deeds would not meet.
So that's an example of one that's typically.
Just gotta color in the proposed addition.
Okay, gotcha.
It's not wrong, it's just what we used to.
Yeah, no, and that's why I just wanna pass it on to them, so that they're aware there, because I, I don't know how much they do on this time either, but I just, I just wanted to make sure that, send it to them, so he knows what they do. No, yeah, no, and I appreciate it, no, no. When did you guys pass your, um, accessory, uh, building bylaw? Did that just get happened in the last two years, or have been around, that you keep kicking the tires?
I think that was about two or three years ago now, yeah.
Good luck.
Accessory.
November, seventeen.
Seventeen, yeah.
Oh, I've been doing this business for thirty years, and twenty-five years ago, I did one in Lexington.
Oh, yeah.
Lexington finally had a I- one system.
Right.
It was, you had seven fifty, that was it. No matter how big your house was or what, you could do an accessory building with seven fifty. And back then, it was same, same issue. What happens when that person dies, and now the person's gonna come in and buy, somebody buys it, or the people that were living there is now renting it off to somebody else, and then the neighbor's gonna get up in arms, and it's just, it's just an ugly situation. And like, this sense, you know, I understand your frustration, and I've done them in Stowe, and I've done them in different towns, and each town has their just nuances of, but it was interesting to hear you guys have that thirty percent of what is in the square footage is can't exceed a thousand square feet. So at least you're trying to, I did one in Stowe, that was the size of the house. I mean, they had plenty of land, and stuff like that, but.
There's a thousand square feet.
Yeah, and that, and that's, you know, but in Stowe, they didn't have it, and that's was probably ten or fifteen years ago. And so I built a, it was twenty-four by, oh, forty, I think it was? Yeah, it was, it was a good-sized structure, but it was on four acres of land, and, you know, it was in keeping with the house, and they had no problem with it, but yet, there was still, although, yeah, they didn't have any problems with it. It's just, it's interesting, and each, I've done one in Weston, I've done one in Wellesley, I've done Stowe, Lexington, so it's just amazing, you know, um, each town, and how they have to handle this, and especially in your town, we've got such tight lots and tight areas, and, you know, again, you just, you just passed it two years ago, so that's interesting that it's that short of a time. I'm sure there's, there's accessory buildings in this town that have been around forever, and then you put the kitchen in after you leave, and stuff like that, so.
You said that.
No, I didn't say that, I would never.
I gotta go, thank you, guys. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you. Mark, I got all those notes you gave me, so I'll give you an updated plan with all that structural stuff.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hey, here's your.
Oh, thank you.
So now I just gotta bring this to the clerk's office to have her stamp it, and then, or can I just get this recorded, is this all I need?
Yes, but you need to check with Mark to come in and get this process started.
Go to Mark next.
Okay, great, thank you, guys, appreciate it.
The pill period, too, right? Yeah, so we'll have to file the decision once we get it.
Well, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yes.
Okay, so this doesn't give me much overtime, so I got fourteen days, then twenty days.
Yeah.
Way it is.
Yeah, before you know it.
But, but.
Which I didn't tell the other two people.
Yeah, well, that architect must know already, she seems like she's been.
Oh, yeah, she's before us.
But I see Mark tomorrow type thing, or the next couple of days first, or does it even matter?
You can wait for the decision, but I mean, you can get started, you just can't.
He can tell you what to do.
Okay, I'll go talk to Mark, I'll talk to Mark. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Have a good one. If you could start construction, might be added some risk to the appeal or something.
We've got some minutes before, but I've got a question for you. Are these new? Is this something new from the assessors department?
So assessing does not give us the property record cards anymore, for whatever reason, they've changed their procedure, limiting paperwork, new staff, et cetera, whatever it is. So I got that from the Town G.I.S. today, I can search up the lot, which allows me to view the property record card, so I just printed it from there. We're gonna start, I guess, because you guys, it's, I see the need for it, seeing when the house is built, so, um, we're gonna start, hopefully, asking assessing ourselves.
If not, I mean, if not, I'll come in and I'll go upstairs and get one copy.
I mean, doesn't that not suffice for what you need? No? Okay.
We'll chart the history of it, so like, when an addition went on, something like that.
We liked, it used, you used to attach, uh, a note on it when other permits were pulled, so you knew when additions were done, is this garage legal, or wasn't it? Did you pull a permit for this?
When the change upstairs and I did ask for those, they don't, they just don't do them the same anymore. It's more along the lines of what you're getting now.
Well, I don't know what you're, no, no, it's not, that's not acceptable. Example, the built, the house was built in, in, um, in eighteen sixty. We don't know what, we don't know what has transpired. We've had some very contentious issues over the last year, and the only way we could get to the bottom of it was the assessors' card. They can't destroy those, those have to be maintained, so we want a copy of it, period. If we can't get a copy of it.
When I did, I've, before even, before they stopped coming, the few times that I did ask for them, they weren't, they were different than what you were used to getting anyways. Even the abutist list that we get, it's different than what we used to get before, so I don't know what, what else changed upstairs, but something else changed so that everything is different, the paperwork, the process, everything. I don't know how much.
I'll follow it up.
I'll talk to Victor, too.
Freedom of Information Act for every problem.
They can deny copies of those old records to anybody else, but for the zoning boards, it's unacceptable, we must have those copies.
Okay, I'll talk to Victor.
And it's non-negotiable.
Exactly, exactly, I, and tell Gene. If Gene can't make that decision, then I'll come in, and on behalf of the board, and I'll go to the town manager. But I mean, we need those cards.
Okay. Will do. I'll get them.
I don't think we need the abutter list, do we?
Yeah, the abutist list.
So.
Just, just to review, forty A says, the abutist list must contain the following. The abutter, the abutters, the abutter to the, the property in question to the north, south, east, and west. If it's across the street, the abutter to those abutters, and the abutters to the abutters on the same street. It usually involves a total of maybe fifteen notices that have to go out within three hundred feet. So they take a circle, draw three hundred feet, and everybody within three hundred feet gets a copy of it. We don't need a copy of that to go out to everybody, but if the town wants to do that, fine, we don't care.
It's more paper. Do you guys need these engineered assessing maps?
Do we, I don't really, well, the larger map, yeah, to locate where the property is.
Absolutely, when I'm gonna go see it or something like that.
This is eleven by seventeen, right?
Right, the eleven by seventeens work for you?
Those are helpful.
Okay, you don't need a twenty-four by thirty-six.
I think what John said is the list of people I read.
Right, right. So this is from the engineering department that we get separately from the assessing.
I know, I work land sometimes, so if I know anybody.
Right there, yes.
I get pictures of the street, you know, the building, what the existing conditions are, satellite view.
But I guess the, the question about the map from engineering is the size. This is the eleven by seventeen size, there's been discrepancy this, this week, or last week, about it needs to be.
Twenty-four by thirty-six, you don't need that for this.
No.
Okay.
I'll tell you one thing that would be good. Not the eleven by, well, the eleven by seventeen might, might, might be okay, but the bigger one is better. And that is a zoning map of the town of Reading, because the zones change. And when you're looking at it, the abutting zone could be next to the property, which we don't see, because it's not on the certified plot plan that we give this part of it. So going from business A to business B, or business B to residential, or to the industrial, we don't see any of that stuff. And it's good to have, I've, I've always used, but I don't get anymore.
Plot plans should depict zoning lines.
Yes, I thought I had.
It might be, exactly.
Yeah, yes.
Usually it does, right?
Well, you used to get it, when they were updated.
There's like a line right next to it.
This is what it's called, different one.
Right, I thought they usually did, but.
Yeah.
Okay.
An updated, okay, that's eleven by seventeen.
I have those.
I've seen some people back because it hasn't said, let it be fifteen and stuff like that.
You can print it off the town website.
Right.
Yeah.
If there's a zone line close by, it should state this abutting property is S-twenty, this one.
I can print, they tell you that all day, oh, you can print that right out.
Sure I can, but I'm not gonna. Well, every time, every time you have a case, you go to the case, you leave, leave the other stuff, if you, if you save it, you leave it with the rest of the paperwork in the folder, or you dump it, and you have to reprint it out, follow, you get a just take turn.
It's not just the town, it's like, I bought a new snowbower this year, I asked for the owner's manual, oh, go online and get it. What do you mean go online? Just give me it. Oh, we don't have them anymore. You're gonna get frustrated with that. You want to notice.
Finding your age.
Change your name.
I can't.
You can't get the owner's manual when you buy something, can you, right?
Young guys, young guys over here, they don't.
I'm on the border of discovering that one as well, man, that's interesting.
Yeah. Okay, we have some minutes before us this evening.
That's my bedtime. Only one second. We have to verify with the antelopes and stuff, so.
First one is, uh, December the fifth? Fifth, December the fifth. I, I didn't have a lot myself.
You got them in your prior packet.
Yeah.
The prior packet.
Oh. You have it?
I have mine, but I don't remember that.
Remember?
Just on the truck one time.
I just had a.
Yeah.
What did you have? Couple of things, uh.
Christian?
Christian, we're going through the minutes now. Okay, December 5th?
December 5th.
And this is just a little grammar. I would put like on the start of these cases, zoning board will hold. Can we change that to held? We held a public meeting. This is, this is the minutes.
Oh, gotcha.
We held a public meeting and this is what we discuss. And we'll go through that. And let's see, on that case now, page three. About a third of the way down. After the vote, 500, Drina Redfern, Tolet, Hagstrom and Purnas. She got on a motion by Mr. Redfern, seconded by Mr. Hagstrom. The zoning board of appeals moved to grant the applicant's request for a withdrawal without...
Without prejudice.
Can we put, yeah, without prejudice? And this was for the variance request. So, if we can get withdrawal without prejudice for the variance request for case 1815. And when we get the case 1821 down, if we get, again, change the will hold to held. We held a public hearing instead of we're going to hold one. And I think that was it on, no, no. Oh, I got, let's see. This is on page five. About the middle of the page. We start the paragraph with Mr. Latham. See that? Okay, Mr. Latham asked about removing the overhand to the secondary door. I think that's supposed to be overhang. Overhang, right? That's the one on, that they were doing the accessory apartment, the two doors.
Exactly, again.
So, it's overhang. And that's what, that's what I had on that. That's all I had. Anybody else? No? Motion to accept? I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of December 12, or excuse me, December 5, 2018 as amended. Second?
Second.
Okay. Next one was on 12? Right. And all I had on this night was just if we could change the tents again. Instead of zoning board of appeals will, will hold, held a public hearing? Continuance of a public hearing in this case. Held a continuance. And that's all I had that month. I didn't have anything. Motion to accept the minutes of 1212 as amended. Second?
Second.
Up second. Up favor? No, you weren't there for that one, so it's 500. And then the last one?
Again, this is at the...
You want to say held again?
Yep. Yep. So, again, you might want a member's present on this one. Looks like there's, this is at the senior senate. I don't think Kyle was there at the senior senate for this. And I think it was Eric.
Eric was missing, but the subject matter was discussed here.
Ah, okay, that was the night he was out and then the...
We didn't, we didn't open the meetings.
This is for one time?
Yeah.
Yeah, I was there.
Were you? Okay. Okay. Okay.
But he couldn't, he couldn't roll in, that sort of was.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I was your...
Okay, sorry. And then on this, if we can just change, instead of will hold a continuance, let's held a continuance.
And I think at the bottom of page one, last paragraph, it says, Mr. Heath explained that the applicant will need two of four. I think that should be three.
Ah. We'll need three of four voting members? Okay.
I think.
It's restated elsewhere as three of four.
Yeah. Okay. Let's pick up here.
I got the second page. We got a four instead of three.
Motion to accept the subject matter of...
One quick thing, John. So, the Mullen rule is actually within I N. I only know this because it's a rule near and dear to my heart. On this board, Mullen versus the town of Brewster.
You want to put that in?
I just, it's in, they reference it twice, I just figured.
Yeah.
And it writes, sake of consistency.
Town of Brewster, huh?
1883, I think.
Do I hear a motion to accept as amended the minutes of 110, 2019?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Up seconds. All in favor? Oh, you can't vote on that one.
He was there?
Is there any other business before the board this evening?
Um, just a quick update on staff. I'm sure you all know Julie Mercy, our community development director. She is moving on to the town of Lexington. And Tuesday will be her last day. So, we'd like to wish her farewell and the best. It's a tough loss for us.
Tuesday tomorrow?
Tuesday.
Oh, Tuesday.
It's her last day. So, if you'd like to stop in, say hello and goodbye, please do. Yep. We're having a little coffee hour Tuesday at 10:00 if you are around and want to stop by as well. But she will be missed and so it'll be me directly handling, planning completely for the time being until we fill that position.
So, are you acting, are you acting planning director or...
I wouldn't go that far. I will defer to Gene still, but...
She is now acting director, assistant to the, to the town manager.
Yep.
And assistant town manager.
Yep.
And perhaps that may be announced.
Yeah, exactly. So, besides that, we'll have our regular scheduled hearing on March 20, which we'll be posting, an ad for next week that will be printing. And we have a continuance for Azalea Circle that I'll be following up on to get some updates on that, so...
So, what do we have planned for the 20th?
Just two hearings, a continuance.
Two hearings plus the Azalea?
No, Azalea plus.
Plus one other one?
Two others. Two others? Oh, yeah, you're breaking. Okay, two others.
Season is here.
Isn't it?
It looks like we're going to get at least three, three tonight. No other, no other information that you have?
I don't believe so.
Okay. Hearing done before the board, I'll accept a motion for adjournment. So moved. Motions to hear a second?
Second.
Size seconds. All in favor? All right, 600.